Let's call the school board meeting to order. George, could you take the roll?
Colonel Evans?
Here.
Mr. Groszan?
Here.
Mrs. Ludwig?
Here.
Mr. Miko?
Here.
Mr. Neso?
Here.
All present.
Stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance?
The Pledge of Allegiance of the United States of America and into the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
The first order of business in this educational organizational, educational organizational meeting will be the nomination of the President of the Board for a one-year term. Do I have any nominations?
I'd like to nominate you, Mr. President.
Thank you. With that, if there's any other nominations, then let's take roll.
We need a second.
You don't.
Actually, we don't.
No, we don't.
We don't.
We just need a moment.
Yeah, we discussed it today. George?
Colonel Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Groszan?
Yes.
Mrs. Ludwig?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes.
Mr. Neso?
Yes. Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
My pleasure, sir.
Mr. Neso, if you could meet me at the podium to the office.
Thank you.
So please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly affirm that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Ohio, and that you will faithfully and impartially discharge your duties as President of the Strongsville Board of Education to the best of your ability and in accordance with the laws now in effect and hereafter to be enacted during your continuance in said office until your successor is chosen and qualified? If so, please say "I do."
I do.
Congratulations.
Could he turn, go back over there and shake his hand so one of us can take a picture of back of your head?
Turn around.
There you go, look at us.
Thank you.
It goes better on the post office wall.
You need to turn it over to me. Election of the Vice President, do we have a nomination?
I'd like to elect Richard Miko.
You're welcome.
Another candidate?
Elect, nominate.
Treasure, take roll.
Colonel Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Groszan?
Yes.
Mrs. Ludwig?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes.
Mr. Neso?
Yes.
Congratulations. Mr. Miko, you want to meet me at the podium to the office? Ready? Please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly affirm that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Ohio, and that you will faithfully and impartially discharge your duties as Vice President of the Strongsville Board of Education to the best of your ability and in accordance with the laws now in effect and hereafter to be enacted during your continuance in said office and until your successor is chosen and qualified? If so, please say "I do."
I do.
Congratulations.
Reenact.
One more. Thank you.
Public comment. We don't have any public comments tonight? Appointment of liaisons to committees for one-year terms. City Council will be Jane Ludwig and the alternative will be Duke. Strongsville Education Foundation will be Duke Evans and myself. PTA will be Jane with an alternate of George. Ohio School Board Association, Richard, Miko. And Student Achievement, Jane Ludwig. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Duke, can I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Jane. Any discussion? All good? Can we have a vote?
Colonel Evans?
Yes.
Mrs. Ludwig?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes.
Mr. Neso?
Yes.
Mr. Groszan?
Yes.
Item nine is appointment of liaison to committee for a three-year term for the player center, Richard, Miko. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Jane. Any discussion? Treasure?
Colonel Evans?
Yes.
Mrs. Ludwig?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes.
Mr. Neso?
Yes.
Mr. Groszan?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Item 10 is Board Committees and Appointment, these are one-year terms. Finance, Duke Evans and myself. Policy Committee, Jane, Ludwig and Richard, Miko. Facilities Committee, George Groszan, I will be the alternate. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Thank you, Jane. Any discussion? Treasure?
Colonel Evans?
Yes.
Mrs. Ludwig?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes.
Mr. Neso?
Yes.
Mr. Groszan?
Yes.
Motion passes.
As we move through this list, any guests who'd like to leave at this point would be more than welcome to head out. No homework. No homework, first time ever. Halfway through ninth grade, first year ever without homework.
Go shopping and spend lots of daddy's money.
Item 11, Establishment of the Meeting Dates. There's an agenda, item A in there. Item 12 is we'll use Robert's Rules to the best of our ability during these meetings. We try to follow those, though they're quite silly at times. Establishment of the Service Fund for 2018. According to Section 315, the Treasury Board of Education certified that the number of pupils enrolled in the Strongsville City of School District is 5,484 as of December 1st, 2016. Recommendation by the Superintendent authorizing the Treasurer. To rein, this allows him to reinvest the funds from 2017 in accordance with Board policies and establishment of administrative procedures. Results in such investments will be reported in the monthly financial reports and to pay all bills within the adopted appropriation of 2017. Item 15, Legal Consent Appointments. Be it resolved that Superintendent Schools has designated, be authorized to contact legal counsel as necessary for successful performance of duty. Legal counsel is designated to be Bricker and Eckert, Smith, Peters and Cale, Squires, Patton, Boggs, Pebble and Wagner, Hoover, Keisun, Riley Law Firm and Walter and Haver. All these firms that we use, well, do we have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. Have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Jane. Any discussion? Note, all of these firms that we use, none of them have retainers, correct?
Correct.
And I'll have a very specific focus in law. For instance, the Riley Firm helped us with building and those kinds of things.
Let's not talk about that one.
And I know.
I know. Can we have a vote?
Mr. Groszan?
Yes.
Mrs. Ludwig?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes.
Mr. Neso?
Yes.
Colonel Evans?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Board of Education Meeting Minutes provides that all the meetings that we have, there'll be appropriate meetings or minutes will be taken. Item 17, Resolutions Requesting Notification. Be resolved upon the recommendation of the Superintendent to approve the resolution request into the Board of Education, be notified by the Tax Commissioner of any applications for exemptions for taxation of any property located within our district. Item 18, The Tax Budget for the Fiscal Year 2018. Be it resolved upon the recommendation of the Treasurer, that the tax budget for the fiscal year 2018 be adopted.
Mr. Neso, I had a slide presentation to go over.
Oh, please.
The exhibit. The exhibit can be found in Exhibit B. So this is an annual item that must be approved and submitted to the county for tax collections by January 15. It's on the agenda every organizational, every organizational meeting. The purpose of the tax budget is the County Budget Commission must certify tax rates to each subdivision or other taxing unit by March 1st for school districts under Ohio Vice Code Section 5705.35. And the County Budget Commission is required to issue an official certificate of resources for the upcoming school year. When the Budget Commission sets the tax rates, they measure based on our needs and they use these schedules to also verify the number of levies that we have out there. The tax budget consists of five schedules. First is the summary of division of taxes levied, a statement fund activity for the upcoming school year, so it's basically our estimated budget for next school year. Any unvoted general obligation debt, any voted debt, any tax anticipation notes for Schedule 5, which we do not have any. So Schedule 1 is a division of taxes levied. For the general fund, we have eight total levies. Seven are continuous and one is renewed. For the renewal, the current one is going to expire next calendar year, November 2017, but it has been renewed, so I have to show it with it being expired here and then when we do it next year, the new one will automatically kick in. But that's just the way they view it. The first column that you see is the rate that was passed. That's at the time, that's when the number of mills that we went out there for, but due to House Bill 920 where it kind of states that it protects the taxpayer of, your taxes can't go up as your, as your property values go up, so you're always collecting the same amount of money that the levy was approved for. So what you see in the next two columns is an effective rate for residential and effective rate for commercial, so you're always bringing in the same level of revenue that the original levy was passed for. The only thing that can change to that is if there are any new constructions, that would increase the amount from the original levy.
Which would be, I mean, if the home values are going up, it's an indication that there's valuation inflation.
Right.
Which also means there's inflation in other areas most likely, right?
Right.
And then that's why, that's what we're always fighting against in the budget.
Right.
Is that we don't get, we don't get any additional compensation as prices increase anywhere, so we always have to be more and more efficient with what we do.
Yeah, correct. As our current, for our current revenues, they remain flat with our tax collections for the most part. As valuations go up, the effective rate changes to keep those dollars consistent as we're, as we're bringing in. And then what is not affected by House Bill 920 is our inside millage was, which is the first column, which is the 5.6 mills, and the bond retirement, which is right now at three mills. Schedule 2, Statement Activity Fund. That can be, it's two pages long, so I don't have it as part of the, as part of the slides, but you can find it on, in the exhibit. And essentially, it's our estimate of for our budget next year. For the general fund, I took it off of our five-year forecast that was presented in October. And for the other funds, it's, if you remember when I did the budget book, there was, the budget book went out five years for each fund, so I was able to take the next year and made any adjustments based on any activity based on this year so far, kind of just an estimate. And they use that just to determine our need. Again, that's going to be adjusted next year when we do the five-year forecast and when we also present the budget to the board in June. Schedule 3 is our unvoted debt. Right now, we have four, three within the general fund and one in Fund 3 for the Maraski Improvements. Two within the general fund are for energy upgrades and those will be paid off in 2020 and 2024. And then one was for the purchase of buses and facility improvements, the pre-K building that was acquired in 2005. The bus portion of this debt has been paid off last year and the pre-K portion will be paid off in 2036. And then the one for Fund 3 and the Maraski Improvements, that was in 2005 and that's estimated to be paid off in 2034. As you can see, the balances are principal outstanding at the end of this year, 6.9 million. And our estimated principal and interest payment for calendar year 2017 is 783,000.
George, have you taken the time to look through these and see if there's any way of refinancing these? And I'm curious to know what effective rates we are paying on those loans?
Yes, the, the Maraski Improvements, that was refinanced a couple of years ago. So to look at that again, it's, it's, it's too close.
Understood. But you've looked at it?
Yeah, we've been looking at them with our financial advisor. And then for the next schedule, Schedule 4, our voted debt, we were looking to refinance that. In November, December, as you probably saw, there was a resolution that we had to give the authority if the market turned to go out. Right now, we're, we wouldn't see any savings if we went out, but we're still looking to see if the market turns. We still have the flexibility to go out to do a refinance for our voted debt, and this is for the construction of the middle school and high school bond project. So originally issued at 81 million, currently as of January 1st, outstanding is 75 million, 230,000, and our calendar year 2017 principal and interest payments, about 4.3 million. And then Schedule 5 is for any tax anticipation notes, which we don't have any. So that concludes the tax budget. If there's any questions?
Nope, all good, thank you.
Thank you.
Item 19, Broadcast of School Board Meetings. The Board authorized the public broadcasting of all regular meetings during the calendar year. Item 20, Resolution for Group Health Vision Dental Insurance for Board Members. Be it resolved upon the recommendation of the Superintendent that the Board members may participate at their own full expense in group health vision dental insurance provided to the other employees of the district, and none of us do that. But we're allowed to. Hiring Authority. Be it resolved, the Strongsville Board of Education authorizes the Superintendent to employ personnel on a temporary basis between Board Meetings. This item requires a separate vote. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
A second? Any discussion? Treasure?
Colonel Evans?
Yes.
Mrs. Ludwig?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes.
Mr. Neso?
Yes.
Mr. Groszan?
Yes.
Motion passes.
That brings to item 22, Superintendent's Report.
Thank you, Mr. Neso. I'm going to go to the podium. I do have a short presentation for the board. As, as you all know, we have our Strong Schools 2020 Plan, which really is focused on how do we ensure that we're becoming a premier district for our community and for our students? And through that plan, we have a variety of action steps that are on the docket for this year. And those are looking at what programs, what ideas, what concepts can we bring to the district that could possibly enhance what we're doing? So throughout the next few meetings, we'll have a series of presentations that'll share with you some ideas, some concepts, some research we've done that we could possibly look at adding in next school year or future years. So the presentation I'm going to give you tonight is just some informational ideas about an administrative internship program. It's not an official recommendation at this point. What we want to do over the next few months is share some ideas with the board as we develop them. And then in March, April time, we will administratively look at those, decide which ones we feel are in our best interest to move forward, and then come back to you with an official recommendation for your consideration. So this is just for informational purposes at this time. And as you could see on the first slide, the action step for this was to develop a proposal for adding an administrative internship program for the 17, 18 school year. Whenever we have these ideas, it's not just ideas because they're nice to haves, it's ideas to solve a problem or to enhance what we're doing. And one of the things that Jenny and I spent a lot of time and our other administrative team members spent a lot of time over the summer talking about is because we have such high retention with our administrative staff in the district, which is a positive. We have other teachers in our district or certified staff members that are looking to move into administration, are looking to take their career in an administrative direction, but they don't have an opportunity within the district to build that experience to be marketable for an interview. A lot of times, our, some of our best teachers that go into administration, they have to leave the district. And we found a lot of our teachers and as our staff has become younger over the past few years are looking to go into an administrative career, don't want to have to leave the district to gain that experience necessary to be a principal. And so we're looking at how we can provide opportunities for teachers to stay in our district, to get administrative experience, and either move up the ladder when openings occur in our district, or if an opportunity would present itself elsewhere, to do that as well. A lot, as you may know, Berea has a longstanding administrative internship program. Their Superintendent actually went through the administrative internship program in Berea. Brunswick started administrative internship program, and we've done research in other areas to see how this program can be beneficial. And as you could see on the purpose, it really is about developing leadership skills in our current teachers as well as that practical, hands-on experience that most people need when they're going into interview for that first job. So the first thing we took a look at was qualifications. What do you need to have to be applicable for possibly an administrative internship position? First of all, we feel it's important that you've been in the district for at least three years and had that teaching experience with us. You can either hold a current principal licensure or certification depending on when you received it, or you can be currently enrolled in an accredited program and be able to attain your licensure within two years. So the benefit would be you're getting hands-on, practical experience while you're going through your coursework, and then when you complete that coursework, you'd be ready with great experience for that first administrative job if you should so choose. The last requirement or qualification would OTAS and OSES are credential or an acronym for you can evaluate teachers and you can evaluate school counselors. So part of that experience, we would expect that they would get credentialed so they can be a part of the evaluation process, which is a very important part of administrative work. As we look at the internship experience, we would look at three components where we try to give them exposure and develop their skills. The first would be school site experience. Obviously, they would be a part of the building team. They would work day-to-day with the administration in an administrative role and work closely with their overseeing supervisors and principals. They'd be a participant of our administrative team. They'd attend building meetings, they'd attend district meetings to get a flavor of what it's like to be an administrator and see things, you know, all of us in the room had come from the classroom and moved up to a principal or a variety of other jobs. What is difficult to truly understand when you leave the classroom is to see the big picture of a building and to see what goes on and what makes it work. A lot of times, you just see what's in your department or what's in your classroom or what's in your area. It really gives candidates or interns an opportunity to see the big picture, and it's even a different step when you look at a district perspective of how all eight of our buildings work together for the betterment of our students. The last thing we look in this experience is providing a professional development series for them, and we'll talk about that a little bit later, but providing targeted PD for our interns. And as we discussed this and Jenny and I talked about this, we also feel that the topics that we're looking at that would be good for an intern program would also be good for new administrators that come into our district. One of the areas we need to enhance is we really don't have a structured mentoring program for new administrators when they take a new role in our district. And not only would this be great for our interns, but it would be great for any new administrator that would come to the district to help develop their skills as they progress in their career. So let's talk just some guidelines, how it would look, how it would work. What we're thinking right now at this point is that we would have three administrative interns in the district. We would have one elementary, we would have one at the middle school level and one at the high school level, and I'll talk a little bit later about how that would all work and what's an appropriate administrative staffing level at those three different levels. We talked a lot about duration. How long should somebody be able to be in this internship? What, do you look at other districts that have internships? It's anywhere from two to three to four. We looked right now at a two-year internship that we feel that would give a good flavor of the job and the responsibilities and build some good foundational skills, but it also gives, as I put in there, with my approval, we could extend that internship if we feel it's a good fit for the intern, if we feel it's a good fit for the district and consistency moving forward. We did put in there, obviously, as a district, if we do go forward, if there's any financial reasons why we can't keep the internship program, we could disband it. And there's also the out for the employee and there's the out for me. So the out for the employee would be, hey, if you do this for a year and it's not for you and it's not administration, it's not what you thought, you could go back to your previous position. And, you know, after the application and interview process, if you're in there for a year and it's really not working out, then I, as Superintendent, have the authority to say it's not working out and to go back into the classroom. But through a stringent application and interview process, I would think that would be at a minimum. We do believe that, you know, we want to give candidates and interns a variety of experiences, so we did put in there that if interns, if another administrative internship position opens up, let's say they were hired as an elementary intern, and in their second year, a middle school internship opens up, and they have the credentials to do that, that we would entertain a request to get a different experience simply for helping them see administration from a variety of lights. In terms of salary, salary in the internship programs, they would not be paid as an administrator, they would be paid on the teacher salary schedule. So they would follow the salary schedule as if they were in their previous teaching position. The only additional compensation they would receive would, currently, our administrators work roughly 20 extra days than our teachers do. And, no, that's wrong, they work 30 extra days than our teachers do. The, we're looking at the interns working 15 extra days, five after and 10 before, to get a little bit of that summer experience. They would be evaluated every year like every other employee in our district, but we would change them from the teacher evaluation system to the principal evaluation system. That's what all of our assistant principals and principals are evaluated under. And we also feel it's important that there's a project-based learning component to it. You know, as a former principal that had assistant, that worked with assistant principals, every year I had them work on a project that they wanted to take from concept to fruition to develop their skills to lead that activity. This would be a component of their internship of each year under the direction of a principal. They would have to develop a project that was meaningful to what the building needs were and to see that developed and put into place in the building. And then at the conclusion of the internship, so at the, at the end of the two years or if we extended based on my approval, the teacher or the intern, if they get a job in our district, wonderful. If they get a job administratively in another district, great. But if they're still here and decide that they want to go back to the classroom or they just haven't found that administrative opening they're looking for yet, they would return to their original position. If that original position isn't there because it's eliminated or a more senior teacher is in that position, they'd be placed in a like position based on their certification and licensure. And then the last piece is just a disclaimer is simply being a member of the internship program does not guarantee any intern the right to a full administrative position within the district. So this is just a list of some of the topics that we would break down in that professional development series, some late summer and fall topics, winter and then early summer that kind of give a good flavor of the administrative year and topics that they would need to develop moving from the classroom into an administrative role. So here's how the structure, the last slide that I want to share with you is here's how we look at the financial component and the practical component of how would this work? If we do recommend to the board and it is approved to move forward, what would it look like? What we would look at is this would be an additional administrative intern position at the elementary schools. We still haven't, we haven't finalized, you know, how that assignment would be. I know, I feel strongly that it's not just based on numbers, meaning the biggest building gets the intern. We would look at a variety of factors for whether one or two buildings would get an intern to split to get a different experience. But the cost to the district would be to replace that teacher if needed. So based on enrollment and staffing next year, if we have an elementary intern and we need to replace that position, that would be the additional cost to the district is we need to replace that position, that would be the additional cost to the district is whatever that teacher's salary would be to replace the intern. At the middle school, we would look at more of a transition program where we don't feel that we need additional administrative staff at the middle school or the high school. We use a range of about one assistant principal to 600 students. And we're at 2,000 students at the high school, and we're, you know, a little over 1,300 at the middle school. So we don't feel that we need to add additional administration help there. We do feel at the elementary school, we could use some additional administrative help in the form of an intern. But what we would look at at the middle school is when an assistant principal opening would occur, we would transition that assistant principal opening to an intern position. So the middle school, whenever that would happen, would be one principal, one assistant principal, and one administrative intern. Same concept at the high school. If we should have or have, whenever we have an assistant principal opening, one of those positions would become an intern, three assistants, and a principal. So that is the concept that we're looking at. An administrative intern, even if they don't have the full licensure, could do all the work that an assistant principal could do except for execute suspensions.
Executions.
Good choice of words.
True. So other than that, they could evaluate teachers, they could handle student discipline, they could handle parent conferences, they could work with departments and teacher teams. So they could do all the work, gain experience, help develop the skills of our internal staff member to help them grow and develop for the future path they choose to pursue in their career. So again, I'm open to questions, discussion, thoughts that you may have, but that's just an initial sketch of where we're at with that strategic action step and why we feel it could be an enhancement to our district.
I'll start, I guess. The concern, I guess, I like the idea that the internship wouldn't be at the middle school and the high school, you've got an opening, they're kind of filling that role as an intern, right? So you're gonna, you're not duplicating it at that level. At the elementary school level, it adds, you know, the cost of one teacher. I mean, I think for what we gain, I'm not, I'm more concerned about putting someone through the program and having them leaving for another district while they're in the program. They're looking for an administrative job, one might not be open. We do, we pay the cost of the training and develop them, then they leave. The equivalent of that in the corporate world would be, you know, if you are, if we're putting you through college, if we're, if you're taking courses or doing things to better yourself, you sign a commitment that you'll stay for a given period of time. And if you, if you leave, then you have to pay back the cost of the courses you took, and it kind of ratchets down over a period of time. I'm not sure that you can get an equivalent type process with this, but it would be, I'm just worried about training people for other districts. You know, I don't really want to be the feeding ground for other districts. So if there's any way, and I don't know, in the process, that you can look for some type of commitment or something that would give us assurances that we're just not training somebody for another job, that they're gonna go somewhere else, unless you feel that the interns, I mean, in the middle school and the high school, they're filling an open slot, so that's great. Hopefully, we get, we're good enough that we can keep them. At the elementary school level, you're training somebody who might just walk away. There may not be an opening after two years. And I wonder, what do you think, what's the benefit? What's the, how much does a district gain by putting them through this position if they should leave? Is it, is it a loss? It appears to be a loss to us, but what do you, what's your thoughts on that?
Well, my thoughts are, we're losing them already. You know, we're not providing the training, but the folks that are wanting to go into administrative career and don't see that pathway in the district, they're leaving. And we've had a couple in the past. We've got a couple that are out there now that I don't know how long they'll stick with us if they don't see that path come available. And I, that's always the double-edged sword, right?
Right.
Part of our jobs is, and I always viewed as when I was a principal and even in my job as superintendent, to develop people for future positions that they want in their career path. When I had assistant principals, one of the first questions I always asked them is, what are your career goals? If you want to be a principal, I'm going to train you completely differently than if you just want to be a career assistant principal. And so it was always that risk of if you stay in our district and get that job, that's gonna be fantastic, but I know part of my responsibility is to prepare you for the next path of your career. So you always had that risk, and we always, we have that risk with our assistant principals now.
Right.
That is, for some assistant principals, that's the job they want, that's the job they want long-term and they stay, but for some, it truly is that intermediary step to get to where they really want to be, which is a principal. But that's kind of, I think you bring up a good point, Carl, that we'll continue to discuss in the months prior to deciding whether to come back with you, because we've talked about that timeline a lot. And, you know, we talked about this with our administrative team this morning, and that's one of the discussion points we had, is we all want to put the effort and the energy and the training into our folks, but we also don't want them to turn around the next year and leave.
But if, I mean, as a general rule, if you're developing and making your people better, you're making your district better, and if some of those people leave because there's not an opportunity for them here, you're still happy for them. We still did our job. We develop people, and that's our, that's what we're supposed to do, right? We're supposed to develop our people. I just, you know, I just want to make sure that, I don't know, that we consider that kind of thing. Anybody else have any other comments?
Yeah, I do.
Go ahead.
Two things struck me off the top, Cameron, and I could be totally wrong. I think two years is too long. I think it should be a year. And the second thing is, I think as part of that experience, it shouldn't just be at the school. It should be up here with you and with Jenny and with the administrative staff in this building, because that's where a lot of the rubber meets the road, a lot of the decisions made. And if you're, if you're building a decision-maker, they need to see that aspect of the business as well. And I think, you know, I mean, most of, they spend three-quarters of their time at the school, but a quarter of their time curriculum-wise should be here.
Okay.
That's my thought.
Thank you.
Jane?
Turn my microphone on. I do have concerns about the elementary structure of it. I just worry in, if it is a two-year plan or even longer, by the second year, they should, in theory, be able to run the building without needing the regular principals. So how is the duties gonna be resolved around that? And maybe they should have a rotation so that they do go to other schools to alleviate some of the principal duties of all the other elementary schools. I don't know if that's something that's feasible. I get the whole, you know, immersing yourself in one school and knowing those kids, because that is such a vital part of being a principal, is knowing all those students in your building. But from, you know, selfishly, from a district standpoint, our resources are limited, and I just don't know if it's best spent having two principals in effect in one building where they could share the duty somewhere else. Is that something that's feasible, or?
Yeah, and really, what we've started to talk about with that is where is the balance between sending them so many places where it's not meaningful because it's just so surface-level to, I agree with you, and we've talked, putting them in one place is not benefiting us as an elementary program, and it's not benefiting them in their experience. So we're kind of in that what is too much versus what is a good fit for their experience. And that's why we also talked about, you know, I mentioned briefly, it's not all about, you know, Kinsner, which is our largest elementary school. It's not all, it's not automatically, you know, the intern would go to Kinsner, because, you know, there's a variety of experiences. Chapman and Sarar offer their own unique experiences based on work and experience with students with moderate intensive needs. You know, Whitney offers its own unique experience based on its characteristics, and all the buildings have those pieces of it. So it really is looking at what is the best overall experience and where they can provide an enhancement to the progress we're trying to make at all levels, but in this case, the elementary buildings.
And then to a point Duke had made, I recognize that it is important to have this intern participate in the events that take place here, but as a parent, when I would come into my elementary building and my principal was out of the building because they were in a meeting here, I don't want to have both principals out of the building. If we have an intern, I would rather have him be some, you know, authoritative figure there if there's an issue to resolve. It always fell to the teacher that had been assigned to handle the crisis. So I just would like to think about that aspect a little more.
Well, it was interesting. Today, a couple of our principals were, came through an intern program in a previous district, and that's what they talked about. One of them shared the example that the best experiences were when the principal was out of the building, and, you know, you were the principal for the day or what it may be. So it is, even when you're an assistant principal, when the principal was gone, it was a completely different feeling than when they were in the building.
Yep.
That's all I have for now.
Time-wise, in what, what, I didn't say, I'm sorry. I was just thinking about what Duke said about the one year. Seems like at the middle school and the high school, after the, I don't, you know the training that would be required, and if two years is the training that's required, then that makes sense. If it's less than that, like if it's after one year and it's like snatch the pebble from my hand, and he snatches the pebble from your hand, and, old Karate Kid reference. And if he can do it, then maybe, maybe we set these as a minimum of a year, and maybe the elementary one, you know, a maximum of two years or whatever it is, something like that, so that if at the middle school and the high school, they're filling a role and they've got it, there's no reason if we set the program for two years, they need to be an intern for another year, maybe we just give them the job. But that'd be at your discretion, but I would just be careful with the time periods, because different people are gonna progress at different timeframes, and there's no reason to.
And I agree. That's been the part we've struggled with the most in the discussions is what is that timeframe? And, you know, we went from a certain criteria to now we, we made it, you know, a little bit more my discretion, but that's good feedback.
We did send a thank you note to Coventry, by the way.
So it sounds good. You know what you're doing. I mean, I don't think there's any objections.
I, you know, I would like the, to see more of the background info. Some of the things I'm curious about is just if you could provide us, and I don't expect it now, some numbers on how many, how many people we've, we think we've lost in the past. And we're, you know, we're addressing a problem that we want to fix. I want to be clear on what, what the extent of that problem is. You know, I don't want to wing too many comments, but on the one hand, the middle school and the high school sounds nice because we're keeping the head count the same, but on the other hand, I'm concerned that we bring in a administrative intern, they do the two years of training. I think it's just as likely that there's still no movement at the high school and the middle school level, and at that point, your option is to continue with them, and I don't want it to sound as pejorative as it sounds, but they're just junior principals. And that's just gonna, you know, I don't, I'm afraid that in two years, we would have that problem at the middle school and the high school level, and then we're looking at a thing of people just rotating in and out. So I'm curious how long-term, whether it really addresses this issue of losing, losing people, or are we just, are we just creating a new problem? And that's something I kind of want to digest a little bit, but seeing the extent in the past and seeing some names of people who are itching to develop the administrative would address that.
Sure, I can do that.
I, I'm gonna ask a question on it. I don't, I guess I don't, I don't get the point of that. Is it, you mean, after the two years, they would fill the role, or they would go back to their other role, right?
They would go back to their other.
And so what you're passing up on is looking at outside candidates? Is that what you're saying? That's what you're saying, juniors?
Well, again, we're not an administrative intern, but at the middle school and the high school, we're keeping the body count the same. And we're not gonna start it, unless I misunderstand it, we're not gonna start it at the middle school and the high school until positions open that we're not going to fill.
But the intern's gonna kind of fill that position as they grow into it, right?
That's, that's not what I see. You're saying this intern position would be at the middle school, it would be a principal and assistant principal and an administrative intern.
Correct.
Currently, we have a principal and two assistants. So we're switching the role.
Correct.
Maybe you'd swap out an assistant for a, for an intern.
You got it.
And then hopefully, the intern would take the role.
If there, if there is an opening.
Right. Well, there is an opening.
Well, one of the things.
No, he's saying, correct me if I'm wrong, Cameron, you're saying reducing the number at the middle school and the high school of actual assistant principals.
Correct.
And so we're doing a swap or a sidestep, which allows us the capability to have the administrative intern program. But I'm concerned that we still have the same problem, that there are no opportunities, and that goes to you. You go through the intern program, and then two years later, you're like, Cameron, you're gonna keep me as an intern, or I'm going to some other district? And I don't, I don't expect us to, that's, that's my immediate take on it.
Where's my slot?
Yeah. And we've already said, there is no guarantee that if you go through this program, we have a spot for you.
Correct.
So I think that's just something we need to noodle, and then if you could give us some information on, you know, there'll still be teachers, correct?
Correct.
So, you know, some of the dance we're gonna have to do with the CBA, et cetera.
I can do that.
Yep.
Any other questions? All right. Thank you. I think there's one more thing.
Yes, overnight trip.
The last item under item B for curriculum is an overnight trip for the Strongsville wrestling team to participate in the Top Gun tournament on January 13th, 14th in Alliance, Ohio, and all expenses and associated costs with the trip will be paid by the Strongsville Wrestling Club. Unless there's questions, that concludes my report.
I'm good. Everybody good? Consent calendar, item 23, all items marked with an asterisk, and we have no modifications or changes to the consent calendar are approved in one vote. Do I have a motion?
So move.
Thank you, Duke.
Second.
Thank you, Jane. Second. Any discussion, changes? George, could you take a roll?
Colonel Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Ludwig?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes.
Mr. Niso?
Yes.
Mr. Rosen.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Item 24, Board Bylaws and Policies. We have a number of first readings, but.
I'm confused. Didn't we have first readings before Christmas break? I thought we had a bunch of policies there.
We had discussion about a bunch of policies, but they were, the policy committee loved the job they were doing so much that they had to make edits and changes, and we discussed, we discussed that we were making those edits and changes at the December meeting. This is the first reading of the final version that will be up for adoption two meetings from now.
Can I have a copy of the revised items emailed to me, please?
You, we will email them to you again, and you now know how much fun we have at the policy committee meeting. I'm surprised nobody ever fights us for that committee assignment.
There was a lot of, a lot of discussion. I got a lot of calls, and I said, no, no, no. We've done an extremely efficient and capable policy.
I just want to share the wealth, Richard.
Wealth, knowledge, and. Item 25, Board of Education Other. Do we have any other? As other, I'd just like to say, thank you very much. I'm honored to be president again this year. Happy that we've kept everything, and everything's working well, and it's a pleasure to just keep going forward and, you know, the way the board and the administration are working together and the teachers, and everything's going really well. So we felt there wasn't a real reason to mix anything up.
I thought it's best just to keep rolling along, keep moving forward.
If I may just echo those comments, I appreciate everyone's support as vice president, and I will announce that at Monday's city council meeting, Police Chief James Kobach, his retirement was announced, and Mark Fender, it was announced that he will be the new police chief.
So that means we're gonna get a new liaison for school security too, probably.
Yeah, he's, I met with Mark before the holidays, and I think Lee Colgrove is gonna take over the school liaison. I believe that's what the decision was.
Meeting notification, the next school board meeting will be Thursday, January 19th, right here, same time, 7:00. Executive session, we do have a need for executive session. I believe we have three items?
Actually, four. Mr. Niso, to consider the employment of a public employee or official, to consider the compensation of a public employee or official, to consider the investigation of charges or complaints against a public employee, official, licensee, or student, and to prepare for negotiations or bargaining sessions with public employees concerning their compensation or other terms and conditions of their employment.
Do I have a motion?
So move.
A second.
Second.
Any discussion? No? I want to thank Duke and Jane for their motions and seconds today, keeping the meeting moving, because I know that Richard won't, and, you know.
Lent is around the corner.
Lent is around the corner, and we'll have it again. But we'll go into the big role real quick.
Colonel Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Ludwig?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes.
Mr. Niso?
Yes.
Mr. Rosen? Mr. Grozein?
Yes.
Motion passes. Enter executive session at 8:11.
8:11 sounds good.
8:10. I think you can do 8:10.
I'm trying to give you five minutes.
Let's go 8:11.
8:11:30.
8:11:30.